Ready when you are.
Vice Chair Murphy. Vice Chair Murphy.
This is Director House. I just wanted to let you know, Vice Chair, that we were not hearing you, but it seems like we're picking up some sound. And I also wanted to announce to the commission and the public that we've been working on our AV system, and we might have a little bit of technical difficulties, but I'm not sure. I don't think this is being caused by that recent work.
No, we'll give her a call.
Okay, thank you.
There has to be three of us to make a quorum, correct?
That's absolutely correct. Commissioner O'Nais. The Vice Chair does seem to be making some efforts because she's going on and off mute. So it sounds like there's probably an issue with the microphone. And I'll just start briefly by saying this meeting, we only have one item on the agenda for formal consideration, and it's a workshop format. So anybody who's there, you know, wanting to provide comments, or the commissioners, should be intended to be a conversational type discussion tonight. We're really looking for input. And I don't want to steal too much of Senior Planner Harry's thunder, but we did some work with some local architects. And one of those architects is on the line as well, and may be able to chime in at the end of JP's presentation to provide their input as well on the ordinance and their thoughts on it.
Noah, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Welcome, Vice Chair.
I apologize for that. I'm not sure what happened, but appreciate you being patient.
Absolutely. That's the name of the game these days, I think.
I agree. Can I go ahead and get started, or is there anything else to do before starting?
No, we're absolutely ready. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting on December 7, 2020. Can I have a roll call, please? Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. Commissioner O'Nais.
Present.
Commissioner Hancock.
Present.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Present.
And I will show Commissioner Lemus and Commissioner, Chair Moore as absent. Thank you. Moving on to changes to the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda at this point?
We have no changes this evening.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move into oral and written communication. The public is asked to please unmute and state your name and address for the record. I apologize, it may actually be raise your hand so we can unmute you. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to items not already agendized for tonight's discussion. Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. I'm just going to remind our attendees tonight to raise their hand on their smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone. And at this time, I see no public comment. Okay, thank you. Then we will close public comment. Vice Chair Murphy, I apologize. I do have a raised hand. Okay. Brian Flavin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to figure this out myself. I didn't know if you were taking a role of people that were actually listening, but I am. I am here. I'm listening and present and look forward to the workshop.
Thank you, Brian. And I'll give it one more opportunity if there's any oral comment. No further raised hands. Okay, thank you. Then we'll close public comment and move into the matters at hand tonight, which is the Cottage Housing Workshop. And I will hand it over to staff to walk us through that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. I'm going to request remote control. Well, actually, Lauren, do you want to put the... There we are. Let's wait for a moment to see if I got control of the presentation. But this project, or this project or effort is about, it's been going on now about a year and a half, we've been aiming for this, perhaps maybe a little more. Brian Flavin, the gentleman that was just speaking, was, is an owner of a large property just outside, or just on the edge of Katati. And originally, they were proposing kind of a standard, single-family dwelling, low, you know, very much like, like everything that's being built, like currently that's being built with the Kessing Ranch project. So fairly large homes on that size lot, about eight to 10,000 square foot lots. And and they, part of his partners decided that the project wasn't going to work for them. And so Brian and I, with the former director, started talking about a new, a different type of development plan. And we've been calling it cottage housing. That's a popular name. Another name is Pocket Neighborhood that you'll hear, and some have referred to it as modern day kind of camps, kind of based on the old kind of tent camp things that used to be established in certain areas that then became homes over time. All right, I'm going to see if I've got it. So this is the first workshop. What we've done is we've done some research. A lot of work was done in Washington State on this. And are ordinance tiers from some of that, or are proposed ordinance tiers from some of that? And can you see my thing moving, Lauren?
No, I don't. I'm going to go ahead and advance the slide for you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so just by way of background, this effort's being paid for by an SB two planning grant. This was part of a 15 bill housing package that came out in 2017. It was, the bill itself is aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and high housing costs. Part of that, one of those bills was the Building Jobs and Homes Act, which was SB two. And that included a $75 recording fee on real estate documents. And then through those fees that were collected, a part of that money is going to planning grants throughout the state. So we applied and were awarded $160,000 grant, which was the maximum amount that we could have been awarded. We received that grant award notification in September of 2019. And we're looking at four different efforts as part of that grant. This will be the second one to come forward. The first was an ADU, J-ADU code amendment, which we adopted in February and March of this year. So now we are moving forward with the cottage housing piece of it. And then we're also going to be looking at buy right, multifamily housing, and also objective design guidelines. And the objective design guideline effort is currently underway right now. And we start seeing that next year, which is only a couple of weeks away. All right, next slide, please, Lauren. So before I get into cottage housing, what it is, I want to just go over what some of our goals are in approaching this. And I, hopefully, this isn't going to get too wordy, but mostly we want to promote sustainable development practices through smaller and more efficient housing and effective use of the residential land. We intend to try to diversify the city's housing stock by providing a housing type that can be affordable and that responds to changing household sizes and ages. We want to encourage, encourage development in existing residential areas by allowing density bonus and design flexibility. We want to provide centrally located and functional common open space, but also open space that fosters a sense of community and openness within the cottage development. We want to provide private areas around the individual dwellings to enable diversity in landscape designs and also foster a sense of ownership in the smaller units. We also want to make sure that we're maintaining the character of the existing residential neighborhoods and ensure compatibility between cottage developments and their neighbors. And we're also, this is something that Noah really tuned into. Katati has a history of coming up with some really interesting developments. And so some of what we're going to talk about tonight's not going to seem exactly foreign. If you look around Katati, you're going to see things that will resemble a cottage housing ordinance. Those were done previously under what's called a planned unit development, which is a planning tool that allows developers to kind of get away from rigid development standards. However, our code no longer allows PUD developments. I can speculate on the reasons, but it's just not a tool that we have. So it's fairly rigid unless you come in for variances of that type. So this ordinance will help bring back a little bit of some of those development patterns that actually are unique or characteristic of some of Katati's developments. Next slide, please, Lauren. Another effort that we're trying to do is address the housing shortage or affordability that really seems to be problematic for what we call, what's called the missing middle. And these are people that are priced out of kind of typical low-density, single-family dwelling neighborhoods. And, but they also have too much money or income to qualify for deed-restricted affordable housing. And this is one of the more challenging housing products to try to produce is those that that get at the missing middle. As that's top image, you could see, single-family dwelling on the left, and then we got high-density apartments all the way on the right. But there's not a whole lot of development with this, in this middle area. We did adopt ordinance for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. But those are units that are tied to a primary dwelling. So they can't be sold off separately, and you can't purchase one separate from the primary residence. Cottage housing does provide a way to get to, well, it allows for homeownership if you want to do, if you want to divide a cottage housing development or subdivide it, you could sell the individual units. And then again, there's duplexes and fourplexes. Cottage housing can come in attached forms, but there's other characteristics that are kind of unique to cottage housing. And also, our intent with cottage housing is to promote smaller homes that hopefully can be affordable by design, by just being smaller. And I say can, because these types of developments can be very desirable in some cases and be made with real high-end products and finishes and can be pricey. So our hope is that we can get a diversity of cottage housing type projects and units even within, within a project. And next slide, please. So these are just some various characteristics of cottage housing. They tend to be compact dwelling units, about 1,000 to 1,500 square feet in size. They can be a little smaller. They can be larger. They tend to be clustered around common open space. Separation between units is typically reduced. They always have some sort of roofed porch. And that porch helps to create this transitional, private, open space between, between the residence itself, through the porch, to a private yard, to a common open space. So there are basically layers of personal space that allow, that allows for some personal privacy, but it also creates an openness within, within the community. We tend to have shared amenities, like the common space, as well as features within that. There could be, and we encourage, development of a community building because the units are smaller. If people want to have parties or gatherings, it typically would be helpful to have a building where they can do that, since it'll be difficult in the smaller homes. They tend to have pedestrian pathways working throughout the development itself, as well as connecting to the neighborhood at large. Parking is often garage door periphery. A lot of times, it's detached from the residents themselves. It does, they can, it does allow for ADUs above garages. They typically have an increased density over the surrounding neighborhood. That's because of both kind of the real and perceived impacts are reduced because of the smaller units and the kind of clustering and the open space. We can increase density, and also because they're smaller units, they tend to have fewer people than, say, large families. So we can increase the density and still not have large impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. Also, dense, and this is discussed in the staff report, but not so much in this presentation, when you require a project sponsor or developer to build smaller units, that it can be cost prohibitive. There's a cost of land and foundation for the buildings that really drives the cost. And so if you require smaller units, generally, you need to help, you need to also allow for increased density so that they can still make a profit or generate a project that's still a good project. Also, cottage housing, because of the way that they tend to focus around common space, they tend to foster a strong sense of community between the neighbors. As well, they share in the care of the common space and their private space that fronts these areas. And it allows for various architectural styles. So when you say cottage housing, I think a lot of people think, oh, the country-type cottage, but that's not the case. They can be very modern structures, or they could be small craftsman structures. It could be mission style. It's just a matter of how you really do careful site planning. And then generally, you want to limit the cluster sizes. Though a development could have numerous clusters within it, you want to limit the cluster sizes in order to create a, basically, you want your neighbors to all kind of know each other. It's kind of the idea that it creates a neighborhood, and that's another name for these, a neighborhood within a neighborhood. And then next slide, Lauren, please. And here, what I want to try to do is here's some of the characteristics. So you can, kind of in the top, you can see, this would be taken from the open space. This is the top-left image, transitioning to the private space, to the porch. They often, they have shared amenities, like the garden center that you see there. They'll have rental units above the garage can be done like an ADU. I think the bottom-left image is characteristic of what you would see where you have, again, this is taken from the porch, looking out into the common space, but you kind of create these layers of space. And then the one on the bottom right also gives you, shows that type of approach. Notice that there's fences, but that kind of helped to delineate the private space, and they can each have their individual landscaping. But the fences are just that. They kind of delineate space that's private, but they're not blocking or concealing their homes, or, you know, kind of creating a walled-off community space or home. Okay, next slide, please. So we talked to a couple architects, or we've been working with some architects, as well as some developers, and to get both their feedback on it. And one of the things we did is we, with the ordinance that's in your pocket, we provided it to a couple architects, and one of them, Conrad de Jesus, with Greenlight Architecture, who's actually on the line tonight. You know, we said, here's the ordinance, and here's a couple areas within the city that we felt are good, good test cases. There are properties that, right now, are underdeveloped. And our question was, if you had this ordinance, how would you approach development? We're going to have more of these as time goes on, but these are some of the first ones that are coming out. And then also, I will say that we really didn't have a back and forth if we, with them. They kind of took the ordinance and put the plans together. Very little kind of communication back and forth with us. And in the, in the future, we would probably have a lot more communication with them, especially if they were coming in with a project. But this was a good way for us just to test the ordinance itself and to see how it would work out. And here's some of the designs that we started to see. So this one is 188 Myrtle Avenue. And you can see that kind of open space between the units down below. These are attached units that front the space with detached garages, some of them with ADUs above. And then as you move to the right of the development, these are what looks like more of your typical, single-family dwelling, but they all share some of this, this common space. As well, we have more active recreational common space towards the far right of the property. This was where you might have a court, or a clubhouse, or a playground. Anyway, so that's part of the concept here. And then next slide, please. This is a property, actually, it's just gone up for sale, and we've been getting a lot of calls about it. But this is another approach to our site plan for this particular property, which is a different shape, different style, has an entrance coming in from two different streets as opposed to one. And this is in your pocket as well. Next slide, please. Now, this particular image is actually a proposal that we have right now. This was not based on our ordinance, but rather, our ordinance was kind of crafted a little bit around this project. This is Brian's project, kind of concept plan that they have right now. This is in lieu of the kind of standard cookie cutter, single-family dwelling development. This is the one they're looking at. And it has a lot of the features that would be within a cottage housing development, including, on the far left, which actually is the uphill portion of this property, there's some garden area and vineyard. And then you'll see detached garages and moving down that shared common open space, a lot of porch activity fronting that open space, a community building in the center. It just really captures a lot of what's in it. It is a little bit large for, for, you know, it exceeds like the 12, the 12 unit. But I think it has a lot of the features that actually work. And part of our ordinance was crafted around the ideas presented in this site plan. And Brian is on the line here tonight, so if he wants to jump in and you want to ask him some questions, he's available as well. And then next slide, please. So just wanted to let you know that this, this is actually encouraged by our general plan. There's several policies and action items to encourage clustering of houses so that there's larger areas of open space, encourage social interaction between neighbors and new residential developments, which is precisely what this ordinance would intend to do, encourage a concentration of neighborhood, community, and retail amenities and services within walking distance. Basically revise our design review guidelines to require clustering or other measures to preserve a sense of openness in new developments, and provide new opportunities for community gathering and social interaction through park facilities, community centers, and such. So it's in line with what we're looking for in our general plan. Next slide, please. So there's a couple slides here. Essentially, what the proposed, the ordinance would do is they would be permitted in RVL, which is residential very-low density, the neighborhood low-density, and neighborhood medium-density. So they would not be permitted in rural residential areas, which have, are more single-family, large properties. And they would not be permitted in our most urban, highest-density areas, the neighborhood, neighborhood urban zoning area. It would require a use permit approval, so all these would come to Planning Commission, for sure, and approval of a cottage housing development plan. If there wasn't going to be any subdivision, they would also go to City Council. The developments must have a minimum of at least four primary dwelling units. So we want to make sure that there is a minimum size for this. The cottages should be at least 700 square feet, but no larger than 1,500 square feet. We're getting some feedback to increase that a little bit, up to like 1,600 square feet, both to allow for greater range of families, as well to be able to accommodate J-ADUs within, within the primary dwellings. It would allow for two times the density of the underlying zoning district. It does allow for the development of ADUs. The lock coverage would remain consistent with what Um, the lot coverage would remain consistent with what um what's currently allowed in that zoning district. So no change in in coverage amounts. Um, it does require, and this is um part of the key things, it requires a minimum of five hundred square feet of common open space per residential unit and four hundred square feet of private open space uh per unit. So uh you must incorporate some open space into these projects. It requires the clusters of units to be uh around that open space. Um, and then encourage a certain percentage of those units to in a front uh front the open space so that their porches and uh would actually, you know, uh come out onto that open space. Uh, requires communal amenities such as community buildings or passive or active recreational features uh within that common space. Requires inviting and usable pedestrian walkways. Um, whoops, I said that twice. And next slide, please. Um, fence heights uh are in the interior of the development um are limited to forty two inches and kind of open design like what you saw in those images. Well, we've reduced the setbacks between structures um to sixty eight feet. Um, the setbacks along the perimeter of development would be the same as in in the zoning district, so um it still would uh protect neighbors. It discourages development on slopes greater than ten percent, prohibits development on slopes greater than fifteen. Uh, requires requires covered and screened refuse and recycling containers. Uh, they are required to have porches. And it would require units to have both solar and parking to have E V charging stations. We are looking to maintaining the same parking standards that we currently have or proposing to, and that's two spaces per primary dwelling unit. Right now, we have limits on the size of the carports and garages so that we don't end up with uh large buildings that overwhelm the development um scale and mass. It would allow for subdivision and sales of the individual units, and it allows for flexibility in design to avoid natural uh resources and historic resources. Next slide, please. And like I said, we've been working with uh some architects and developers to for feedback on the ordinance. And here's some of the their initial feedback that we're starting to get right now. Uh, one is to, like I already mentioned, to increase the unit size up to sixteen hundred square feet. Clarify the drive aisle width um in terms of, you know, provide a standard for that so the developer knows what they need to do, especially with respect to emergency vehicle access. Um, difficult to reach maximum density. What this means is basically it's because of the open space requirements. Even though we're saying you can double density, the open space requirements could um basically, it limits the density by design. Um, uh the the recommendation is that to make sure we keep keep the attached unit option, um if it was all single family dwelling. And we didn't allow for attached units, which was one of our earlier drafts. Um, it would be difficult to kind of get any density uh that we're hoping to achieve. There's uh clarify procedures for later additions. Uh, reduce the parking requirements, for example, drop it down to one and a half spaces per unit since it tend to be smaller uh units with smaller family sizes. Uh, limit the cluster sizes to twelve because our ordinance does allow for larger ones. Um, this is kind of, this comes out of Ross Chapin, who wrote um the book called Pocket Neighborhoods. And that's that's recommended in that book. I don't, I don't know if I have an opinion on it. Um, reduce the amount of required common open space or consider a different formula. Some felt that it was just too too prescriptive and there might be a better way to achieve that. Um, clarify that a certain percentage of units should be adjacent to the primary common open space. So I guess it wasn't clear in the ordinance. Allow for driveways and parking in the setback areas. Uh, clarify what constitutes the frontage of the units and then um increase the minimum porch width to eight feet. That's actually a city standard now. Um, we reduced it a little bit because of the smaller units, but the feedback we got back was if you reduce it less than eight feet, then it's no longer a usable porch and it's a key element of the cottage house the designs to um developments to to have usable porches. So the type of porch that's not decorative, but the kind of porch that you, you know, pull up and read the Sunday paper of. Uh, rethink the solar requirement to be based on demand, not the num- not the number of units uh on the electrical demand. Uh, eliminate garage size limits uh because the concern was by limiting the garage sizes, then you discourage, you could end up discouraging parking because then the space becomes used for storage and trash, um et cetera. And also to defer to the Department of Real Estate for common area maintenance requirements. Uh, we right now include a statement about forming an H O A, but um there was a concern that that may conflict with state law. And so, next slide. And so, in closing, thank you. That's really all I want to say. But these are the folks that have been helping us out. Brian Flahaven, uh Dan Hale, the architect that Brian has been working with, Jim Souls. He actually owns the Teller Court Commons in Petaluma, and uh he gave us a tour of that, and I encourage other folks to take a look at that. It's uh kind of the classic pocket neighborhood uh style, uh very high end um area there. Conrad de Jesus with Greenlight Architecture, Paul Fritz, and Jim Hyde, who actually is in the process of either building or just completed a project very similar to this up in Hillsburg, uh who provided us some some nice feedback on that ordinance. And with that, I'll close and uh kind of open it up to any questions or uh comments, feedback. And we'll say that um it was important for us to bring this here at this meeting because we did want to, we know that there's going to be a turnover in some of the commissioners, and so we wanted to get some feedback with commissioners that have been with us for a while. It will be coming back probably in February again after we get through the holidays and the new commissioners are seated. Um, so we will have another stab at this. I intend to, you know, I'm really anxious to hear the feedback that people have and and that way we can work it into the ordinance uh when it comes back um for another for another review and workshop. And with that, I'm done. Thank you for your attention, that fairly lengthy presentation.
Thank you, J P. We'll uh move into questions from the commission, um starting with Commissioner One.
Thank you. Um, as I read this, J P, it seemed like everything you tried that you wanted could be covered by the P U Ds, or as I studied what a P U D was. Can you go over some of the history? Why is P U D out and this in?
I can, I I can only speculate because I wasn't here when the P U D was removed from the code, but um I I can't say that in other communities. P U Ds, uh the reason they were removed from a lot of codes is a lot of people felt that um P U D, that the P U D would it 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 meant that the developer didn't really have to follow any of the standards. So people felt like, hey, they just proposed a P U D and then none of the the standards in in the code, land use code, applies. So they would have different setbacks or coverage amounts or building heights, um a whole series of things. At the same time, developers felt that planners were getting way too involved in their project um over personal opinions, and it came down to what kind of planner you got um or who, you know, who your planner was as opposed to uh a feeling of fairness uh through the code. So that's what I think has happened. There's again, it just came down to uh feeling that you couldn't follow the rules, uh or you didn't have to follow the rules if you if you if you created a P U D. So if this kind of does get to some of the P U D type development, but the but the ordinance is fairly prescriptive. There are, you know, in terms of its rules, um and fairly objective in its design standards. However, it does allow for flexibility, um where, you know, the because of the because these can be difficult to develop uh in full conformance with the standard, it does allow for some flexibility. But Stephen, that's really all I can say is that, you know, my guess is that just if they were, they became unpopular because they felt like some people could get away with 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 whatever they wanted.
Yeah, this is, this is Noah, uh Commissioner One. I'd actually really appreciate that question because uh it really feeds into the perspective that J P mentioned that I noticed when I was first hired is that you know, because so much of Katari was developed under P U Ds. We have these kind of more compact developments, smaller homes on smaller lots. It's really become part of the fabric of Katari. But we no longer have a mechanism that would allow someone to build those today. And so our current code, especially in the single family areas, forces people into the more standard typical development pattern, which is not the most efficient use of land. And also, in some instances, kind of incentivizes people to just level the site, remove all the natural features uh in order to fit the the most, you know, six thousand square foot lots they can in order to build it out as a typical subdivision. And we really felt this was an opportunity to kind of provide another mechanism for folks to continue the typical development pattern of Katari, but while also uh putting some prescribed standards that we all would live in. And and I would just add one other thing. I've worked in a jurisdiction before that was very heavy on P U Ds. We had over six hundred of them. This is in Santa Rosa. And you can imagine the administrative nightmare it is to maintain the individual rules on six hundred different neighborhoods in addition to all of your specific zoning. So to J P's point and to answer your question, it could have been a little bit of um kind of happiness on both sides of the aisle, so to speak, to get rid of the P U D allowance because it does provide so much flexibility uh that each development can kind of be a one off, but then we are responsible for administering that forever into the future.
Thank you. And Chair Murphy, that's the end of my question.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, hello. Um, very interesting to have a look at this and to see the sort of the concepts. And I I agree as a twenty year resident of Katari that or a little bit longer, but I I really appreciate the small, compact um little developments, Greenleaf Lane, um and other places around. So um I appreciate this being brought forward. One of the places I have noticed also, and I'd just like to um get to question answers, but seven one one Marsh Way. Um, how it would compare against this. So that's four buildings round a courtyard um with housing underneath. And so um just just to put that out there, but one of the questions I have is would we, would this be able to support a fourplex? Um, so that that sort of missing middle, um and really a variety of housing is would a fourplex be able to be supported on it? Another question on here, um parking and access, I very much appreciate the um the common areas, um but we have this just ongoing discussion that happens in certain situations about how that common parking can be allocated. And so um that drives a number of things. So would there be allocated, that is somebody's parking be allocated to a particular lot building, um even if it's not adjacent to it? And if that happens, the the whole concept of E V charging as well, um just to make sure that we there would be E V charging available. So that's my initial questions, if I can just throw them out there.
So I'll have to look, I'm sorry, I'm not super familiar with seven one one Marsh Way. Um, I I know Marsh Way, but I can't think of the particular development um and how it might compare to cottage housing, and I apologize for that.
Well, that's okay. I was looking at it and thinking, gosh, this really relates because I passed it and I've actually gone in there a little bit. So I just threw it out for a little bit of research that it it perhaps needs some criteria of a unique development in Katari.
Yeah, um, I will take a look at it, you know, and also right next to that, the the co-housing Frog Song is a similar type of development. And I I would say that this type of development is kind of in between your standard neighborhood and the cow and the co-housing, which has a little more um kind of rules or guidelines that that some people wouldn't be comfortable with. And this is a kind of in between those two. Um, with respect to public parking or shared parking, you know, I guess it it would, we would look at, the way we would approach it would probably be like, does it, does it meet the uh intent and and standard for our parking? And leave that really up to the H O A or whatever the other mechanism was, and this is for the shared parking of, you know, of how they wanted to allocate that parking. Uh, because we wouldn't be wanting to put ourselves in the position of having to enforce parking standards. You know, one neighbor complaining that another neighbor is parking in their spot is is really uh an issue for the management company and not the the, you know, not the planning office. So um, I don't know if that answers your question specifically.
It's it's really, I mean, I just, I know that we have this big discussion going on all the time about, um, you know, vehicle uh parking and access and different things. So you're saying that it would really, that essentially something like an H O A would be expected to come out of this, and that would have to define the rules.
Uh, for the shared parking, yes, I think that would be our expectation. Um, but we, you know, that does have a requirement that there's two, currently two parking spaces per unit. Um, and then and then fifteen percent for guests. With A D U development, you know, state law prevents us from um uh requiring parking. So, you know, that that which just makes the allocation of parking, you know, that more challenging, I would say. Um
Yeah, so so I was
Really would be I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I would just throw out that because we've had a lot of discussion and tensions about parking, is there something, a view that the city can come up with for the future um of how um better parking could be allocated? And I'm just trying to think of the right words. Um, within the units, that even some of the parking that's there maybe is sold, is is a separate um, uh, you know, if if there's, if there's going to be something um allocated. It's just, it's always a tense thing. And as you say, with the A D Us, essentially that's pushed into the commons, whatever that is locally. Um, and I I'm not at all for, you know, I'm a, I'm I'm not at all speaking about having excess parking. I'm thinking of trying to have a better way of statistically managing parking spaces for the for the future, vehicle spaces, so that there is either some flexibility um and something that that the, I guess, the management company could handle. Anyway, I just a comment, I now hear you on that. So the other question I had was complexes, would they be possible here?
I didn't hear that. What was that? That
The fourplex, would that be possible?
Oh, the fourplex. Yeah, you could do a fourplex. Um, in fact, I believe one of Conrad's plans uh included a fourplex. So it would allow for attached units. So you could do a fourplex, yes.
Very nice. Well, I I certainly wrote a lot of notes about this, so it's very exciting. Um, as I mentioned also beforehand in an email, there's a couple of places where As I mentioned also beforehand in an email, there's a couple of places where N V L is mentioned, which I think is zoning, which I think is a mistake in in here. Is there any reason why in the actual ordinance code, the full the full name for the zoning districts could be spelled out? So that more ordinary people, when they're reading it, can get a better understanding of it?
Not at all. That that's a good idea. I can I can make that change.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Well, I think.
And thank you very much for catching that. You are correct. In a couple of areas, I think I used N V L instead of R V L. There's so many of our neighborhood residential start with N and I, I think I just just wrote it in there that way, which was not good. It was a mistake. So thank you for catching that.
Right. Well, I mean, I think it reflects against, I I ordered it against the general plan use map. And the problem is, is I was getting a little bit was not clear about it. So the residential R V L actually relates on the use map to low density residential. L D R and N L, neighborhood low density, relates to medium low, medium density residential. And then there's a trans sort of a translation unit on one of the pages in the Kattati general plan as to what they are. So anything we can do to make it simpler to read the actual ordinance, I think would be beneficial.
All right. Thank you for that.
So that's all my comments. Chair Murphy?
Thank you. Okay, I I have a few comments or feedback as well. I I I'm kind of trying to anticipate when this does come to the planning commission, what sort of comments or requests we may have. And one item is, I do see a lot of familiarity in these images and descriptions from what we already see in Kattati, which is great. It's it's what I love about Kattati. It seems to me like these are proposed as we said, in less of an urban part of Kattati. And likely would have more green space, which seems like a really wonderful backdrop. My question with that, though, is in looking at the two addresses that are proposed here as new possible examples, is there any sort of opportunity to discuss or tie into this, the connectivity to the downtown area? And just ensuring that if these locations are a bit further out from downtown, that, you know, we can plan them in a way that if there's opportunity for more connectivity, whether it be sidewalks or additional bike lanes that we're considering that. That was one of my questions. And the second question was about fire safety, which I'm I know is a much larger issue and something that would need to be discussed on a broader scale. But if these are clustered living spaces in less urban areas, does that in any way increase a need for the discussion around fire, wildfire safety? And and is that something that can be tied into the direction we provide in this ordinance code?
I'm just taking some notes real quick here. So I guess the answer to both of your questions in a nutshell is yes. Though, you know, I I yeah, so we're always trying to search for ways that we can improve connectivity, especially pedestrian and bicycle connectivity with with the downtown and the rest of the community, as well as regional connections. It can be a little bit of a challenge, like if you, for example, within the development, we certainly can, and along the frontage of the development, we certainly can. And that's often, unfortunately, the way we have to piecemeal our our pedestrian and bicycle facilities is we kind of rely on developers to come in with a project. And and as we know, that that has presented some problems in the past where in terms of meeting connectivity. So it is something that we're always working for, and it's certainly a requirement of this ordinance that they kind of that they do can have it both within the development and connect to the broader neighborhood outside of it. And I guess we're just always kind of moving in that path. But it's certainly certainly something that we can take note of and see how we can work that into into the ordinance in a in a in a more defined way. I don't know if Noah has anything to add with that. But then in terms of fire safety, you know, there's nothing that we don't do without working with the without with without working with Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. We're constantly communicating with them. And pretty much anything we do, any discretionary thing we do, and even some ministerial stuff. So I can tell you that's a major concern of ours is fire safety, as a matter of fact, and some of these, you know. And then when you do increase density, we're always looking for different ways of how you can move people out of those neighborhoods in a hurry. You'll notice the two plans that Conrad prepared have dual exits, you know, so that you can flow exit that those developments easier. The one plan that we put together for or that Dan Hill put together with Brian Flahaven is a challenge because there's no way to connect. You know, it's not, it's only Kattati on one side. The other side of that property is bordered by the county. And there's no way to connect that particular piece of land to the neighborhood that's already established because in in terms of a roadway network, because of the way that other property was developed in the past. So, you know, we gotten I was gonna say, there is a lot of concern about that with the Kessin Ranch, that we were providing too much connectivity in too many streets. But this is why we do it. Even though people feel like it's going to increase traffic in the area, we're always looking to make sure the roadway network is sufficient to address fire safety. And it doesn't get people upset, but that's why we do it is specifically to ensure that there is multiple ways out of neighborhoods for residents.
Yeah, and this is Noah. JP, thank you. And I would just add, as JP mentioned, you know, all of our developer projects go through fire department review. And their criteria is that they can get their fire truck to be within 150 feet of any portion of of any of the buildings that are built. And so, you know, they have 150 feet of hose on the truck. They make sure that they can get to any part of any structure. So that means all the way around the backside of them. And and so it's interesting and important to point out that all of the example projects have not gone through a review process. So those are concepts that were created by architects at our request and in two instances, and then architects working with a developer. And we have had back and forth conversations, but none of them have gone through a formal review, which likely and almost certainly would result in some additional modifications to be made to improve circulation and make sure that that 150 foot distance is met on every structure. And then I just appreciate you pointing out the importance of of kind of connectivity in and off site. And we did, there are some specific references in the proposed language that JP drafted that that talks about internal connectivity and connectivity to the surrounding neighborhoods. And we agree that that's critical to their success.
Okay, thank you. I I had two other comments. I just wanted to put this out there as you guys are collecting information that the the option you gave us or the example you gave us, I should say, on Old Redwood Highway, I thought that that was a nice example of spreading out the parking. It it felt like it wasn't all clustered in area. And that seemed very appealing to me when I was looking at it. So again, something I think that we would likely comment on in the future. When this is brought to the commission. And in addition to that, I don't know if this is possible, but as we do have additional kind of exploratory or informational sessions such as this, since we do have many residents that live in neighborhoods that are somewhat similar to this sort of layout, I just wonder if there's a way for us to specifically reach out to them, get them involved or get their feedback, as they may have more of a specific feedback based on their experience as opposed to some of us that that don't live in a neighborhood such as this. So something to consider.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can do that. That's a great, that's a really good idea. We have toured one actual cottage housing development in Petaluma and talked to the residents there. But I think I think I know what you're asking, and certainly that's a good idea. I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and thank you for mentioning the Keller Court Commons, I think you said, in Petaluma. Oh, I will check that out as well. That's a very helpful reference. So I will circle back and just ask if either of our commissioners have additional questions or comments?
What a question. I should say no at this point. I'm gonna do some research on it, and I really appreciate it, appreciate the the examples as well, the sketching out of the examples. So very, very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will open it up to questions from the public. And just a reminder to please state your name and dress for the record and raise your hand to be unmuted.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. Brian Flahaven, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just, I wanted to make a comment and primarily, I guess, really just kind of touch on the the work that JP and Noah have done. Really with, I think, the, well, undoubtedly with the the goals of of trying to work a framework for a development project that and projects that I think fit Kattati and particularly the downtown Kattati area. And and as a developer myself, the trying to put a project together that would add to the connectivity that you guys touched upon, I I think is a primary driver here. I, you know, part of the aspect would be to really promote the use of bicycles and try to get to, you know, not only obviously live in Kattati, but use and access the area of the downtown Kattati. Just by way of a little bit of history, and I think JP touched on it earlier. Originally, this project was going to be just 21 single family homes. Frankly, the prices on them would have had to have been upward million, even maybe push in, you know, million five on some level, just to get it to pencil. We would have been in a position at that point, trying to provide homes to 21 families. And what this ordinance potentially does is it allows us to, you know, maybe get at least somewhere in the 30s in terms of number of them. It'll bring the cost per home down significantly. And and accessibility to the number of residents will obviously jump, also require a certain number of the the percentage of low income housing will go up as as required locally. So it it really fits every every dynamic, I think, is is a huge add to this, to the town of Kattati. It's, you know, based on just primarily the cost of of what things are to build, to to make projects pencil these days is is almost impossible. And and I frankly, I don't want to say this is perfect, but it's a it's a step in terms of meeting meeting a happy medium that allows a project to to go forward and and touches on something that fits not only the community, but then also provides the opportunity for housing to, you know, percentage wise, a significantly larger amount of the population and and just number of people.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any other public comment?
Elise Lord, go ahead.
Hi, hi there. Can you hear me? Yeah, you can. Okay, I'm assuming, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is very impromptu. I was just so excited by what you're describing and the way you've defined the problem and the needs of the missing middle. So I just wanted to say I'm super interested in what you're doing, supportive, available, if you want people to offer feedback. I do live in a P U D, and I'm aware of the problems of P U Ds. I'm trying to move, actually, as we speak. I I did want to echo, I think several people have mentioned the walkable, bikeable Kattati. For me, I'd rather have a place to bike, to park my bike than my car. And that sounds like is already being discussed. I was wondering about the construction, that might be putting the cart before the horse. But are there going to be like manufactured homes or other approaches? I apologize if I missed that in the presentation. I was wondering if they're going to be designated low income parts of this, or if that's also putting the And I guess I just was wondering how one would learn more in general, because it's it's exciting. And I guess the final question is there might be some even additional creative ideas for housing that are beyond the scope of this particular conversation? And who would we talk to about those out of the box ideas? And that's it for now.
Thank you, Elise.
Vice Chair Murphy, I, since this is kind of a workshop, I'm happy to respond to Elise's questions.
Yes, that'd be great.
If you'd like me to at this point.
Yes, please.
So with respect to manufactured homes, yes, you could use manufactured homes. They wouldn't necessarily have to be a stick built. There's a lot of interesting manufacturing home, manufactured homes that are that are coming out. And there's a lot of they're not the tiny, tiny homes, but there's, you know, there is a strong interest in manufactured homes for like A D U developments, which are really quite attractive, and they could be easily applied to a project like this. So yes, there's nothing in it that discourages manufactured home, just because it's a manufactured home. But it does have fairly objective design standards. So you would have to have the manufactured home product, you know, tailored to to meet the to meet to meet the intent. And for example, any foot porch or something. And then with respect to be restricted low income housing, yeah, any any residential development, even if a cottage housing development, 15% of the units would have to be would have to be designated for affordable housing, both very low, low and medium income. Unless the unless the development was 10 units or less, they still would have, they would have to pay an affordable housing and lieu fee in that case. But we apply it to every residential development. And then as far as bike biking, yes, absolutely. And we're always looking for ways where we can reduce parking. It's certainly a trend in planning, and I think the trend is going to continue. In a in a project like this, it would probably, you know, it really depend on how many A D Us are in there before we could look at like seriously considering reducing parking. Because if you had an A D U for every unit, you know, the parking demand would be higher than for a single family. But you know, the idea hopefully is that people are, you know, can walk around Kattati or bike around Kattati and don't need to use their car all the time. And and things are happening in the broader world with respect to shared vehicles. And I think the future is going to look very different in terms of car ownership 20 years out from now. So, yeah, we're moving in that direction. I think that's about it.
Thanks, JP. One other item that Elise had mentioned was Thanks JP. One other item that Elise had mentioned was how we can get more information as we continue to discuss or, or build on this topic.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. If she could contact, I actually just was speaking to her the other day about another property she was looking at, but feel free to contact me or Noah. We're always available. Not always available, but we're always, you know, anxious to chat with the Katati citizens, especially if they have ideas about housing or, or these are, these are the issues that we're tackling a lot these days. So wide open to that. And also I'd like to hear about her PUD experiences. As kind of touching on what you were saying, Vice Chair, and find out what challenges she's encountered there at her place of residence. Yeah. Definitely contact me or Noah.
Yeah, this is Noah and thanks JP. I think that's exactly right. We both are always eager to chat with folks. But one thing, Elise and everyone, actually, you know, we're, we're starting basically laying the foundation for the housing element update, which, you know, has to be fully done and adopted in January of 2023, which I know is a crazy, crazy thing to throw that date out there, but you know, that's two years away essentially from this moment and it's going to be a lot of work that goes into it. And at least we are, will be looking to answer the exact questions that you're asking with regards to providing creative ideas and policies that will live in the housing element. And then those policies are used to inform how we come up with these types of specific rules on a city by, you know, citywide basis. So we love it when we can get folks that are interested in kind of the policy work and not just tied to, you know, some specific project that happens to be, you know, in their backyard or something along those lines. We would really love to have people engage with us early to help shape the rules that go into those project decisions that we end up presenting to the commission on kind of a project by project basis. So thank you. And I'm going to touch on that a little bit in my department report today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any other comment from the public?
I would, Conrad, if you could, I would really appreciate hearing just your kind of experience as an architect, working with this ordinance. And if you have any direct feedback for us or the commission or the public, we'd really appreciate it.
Sure. Am I, um, can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so I think one of the things that I did touch on or talk about before with JP was when I was laying these houses out, I was a bit concerned about like the amount of like vehicular traffic or vehicular. I guess the, the roadway widths was sort of eating into the spaces, but I was looking at the, I guess the, I think it was the zone that these sites were on and trying to like match what was required there. So that's one of the conversations I had early with JP. I do like the idea of varying the, the residential structure types. That's why I included the fourplexes and single and two-story buildings. And I wasn't quite sure how much like public amenities to throw in there, but for each of the sites, I did do the clubhouse with restrooms and, and either the basketball court or the pool, just thinking that, you know, to develop that sense of community, you would have something like that.
Thank you, Conrad. And Commissioners, so Conrad is one of three architects that we've hired to kind of basically give us a, a once-over with a sample property that's in Katati and our draft ordinance and just, we didn't provide them almost no direction. And so we just really wanted them to take it like a, you know, a cold call type approach and really just see what comes out of their creative efforts without any input from staff other than the ordinance itself. So if you would have any specific questions, Conrad is an excellent person to ask. And just know that we will be bringing back two other examples, two other properties, four other examples when we bring it back. Conrad just happens to be very efficient and beat our other architects to getting them in, in time for this meeting.
Okay. Any other public comment?
No further public comments.
Okay, then I'll, I'm going to move back over to the Commissioners one more time and just ask if you have follow-up questions from the discussion we've had so far.
So this is Neil. And I, I would say I really like the direction. The, I, I, I think in coming back to what was just mentioned there about Conrad and I'm, I'm, I'm sort of raising this sort of thought, you know, how can you have connectivity for the, for the vehicles? What he's talking about is just the, the spaces and the widths. But there's, I mean, the difference, I think, between emergency connectivity or even future fire access, in other words, is there a way of phrasing something whereby we can, we can have some access to the property? Parking or vehicular, you know, parking on the property, but then that there might be dual usage areas whereby it could be either open space, but if under a real dire emergency, perhaps there was a fire engine that could get down there. So I'm, you know, I'm just throwing this out that we, we do devote so much space to these roads access on a property and the, you know, the Frogson Co. Housing approach was to try and put them on the side and actually have more of a denser housing, which may not appeal to everybody, but just something along that. And, and you know, when there's connectivity, I hope we, as, as the Chair Brittany was saying, or Vice Chair Brittany was saying, the, is there a way for this, instead of thinking vehicular connectivity all the time, have vehicle access, but pedestrian and bicycle connectivity that may be with a gate? I know we've done this in one place before on East Katati Avenue that would be really not allowing cut-through traffic or speeding traffic to go through dangerous traffic. So, so I certainly appreciate what Conrad was saying, you know, just in there. How do we do that to make it more accessible, make the spaces more accessible? And is there a way of, even in the code, maybe putting in this dual usage idea for some of the, something that, that on the vehicular space, which might be a grid on the ground, a concrete grid that, that could support a fire engine, but not be something that's used all the time? Or anyway, that's, that's an idea I would throw out with that. I do, I do like the the sort of thing of being able to put on ADUs and JADUs on the side of a house. And I, I, I guess this is just my experience and the way I've approached life is, is that I have got one of the few properties in Katati that is a duplex, which was non-conforming for many years. But it enables me to actually provide some local housing to some students. And, you know, so, so a, a combination really of housing types with different access would give owners the ability to be more with the community and providing excess housing or having a granny in or somebody or the other sort of in that capacity. So, and now I see the fourplexes as well that are mentioned or, or put together. So I think that helps with the denser housing, helps with better environmental side as well, better envelope energy management. So, so really great. Thank you.
Neil, I just want to say, we have worked with the fire department. I think it's a great comment about, about EVA access specifically and using alternative surfaces. And, and I think that's what the fire department refers to it as, an alternative surface approval. We actually did that up at Katati Village because we, we didn't like that, the park land that was part of that project was being eaten up so much by the roadways. And so we, we actually did work with the fire department to develop an alternative EVA area that uses, it looks just like grass. And in fact, around the Green Music Center at Sonoma State, it's used extensively. You can't tell, but it looks just like, you know, like a turf lawn, but it functions as EVA access around that entire building. And, and that's a wonderful suggestion. And absolutely, we could use more of that in, in all of our developments in this city. So, yeah.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Nance, do you have any additional questions or comments? Okay. With that, I just want to, oh, yes, I did have one more comment, maybe question getting into the thought process that went behind pulling this together. I did read in the packet, a mention of, in general, what sort of demographic cottage housing does tend to appeal to? And I guess on a broader scale, I'm wondering if that demographic for smaller housing possibly, I think it referred to retired residents or possibly empty nesters or, you know, someone single living in the home. If the design of the homes play into kind of meeting the needs of those demographics in any way, that was an additional thought I had specifically with some of the, the two-story homes versus just a single-story home. So I wanted to put that out there and see if there was additional insight on that.
Um, well, the ordinance itself doesn't require two-story. You, you don't have to build two-story. You can build single-story. I will say the Keller Commons project in Petaluma, that project, I think, has eight units, perhaps nine, eight units. That, that, all the people that live in that particular, it's a high-end development, but they, all the ones that live in there are senior citizens. And I believe they're all two-story. So it's actually working for them. They aren't in, you know, have mobility problems. But also our code, other parts of our code require 10% of units to be not ADA accessible, but accessible like single-story and, you know, that, that do address that particular concern.
And I would just add that, you know, while the smaller square footage, I think, does tend to feed into certain demographic types that were mentioned, the ability to, to design a variety of different housing types, some a little bit larger, some a little bit smaller, some multi-bedroom, some single bedrooms, that'll feed into providing a variety of housing types for a wider demographic. And then also that's kind of what you're trying to create with these is little mini communities that have a lot of different folks that, that are, for lack of a better term, are forced kind of by design to interact with each other and to get to know their neighbors and to engage and to kind of really to have a somewhat of a communal experience in their neighborhood.
Thank you. That's very informative. Okay, with that, we'll move into the next item on the agenda, which is reports by staff.
All right. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Murphy. I will just say, you know, to kind of wrap up on the cottage housing, first of all, thank you to everyone who came and participated. We really appreciate the feedback, but then also that this is going to be coming back. Our January meetings are not likely to happen with the commission, just given that I think our first meeting is right after the New Year's holiday and then our second falls on Martin Luther King Day. So just know this will probably be coming back in February. So just kind of to wrap that up and let you know, and we will, as I mentioned, bring a few other examples that other architects have worked with, just to try to help flesh out what we might see as these developments move forward. But so getting into my, my just brief report, this is the last meeting of 2020. Obviously, it's been an odd, kind of crazy year for us all, and I just want to really say thank you to the entire city team, the planning commissioners, all the way down to, you know, support staff. Lauren has been amazing. And all of the, the various staff who present to be able to pivot very quickly to this new format and meet everybody's needs for the variety, you know, variety of needs we have. I just will say, you know, as the department, we really felt it was important to be able to kind of keep moving on projects and, and, you know, while so many people are, are being challenged with the economy today, you know, when somebody wanted to make an investment or somebody needed a decision, we felt it was critical that we'd be able to provide that. And I will just say that everyone was able to, to make this transition as seamless as possible. And I just really appreciate it all. And tomorrow is going to be our last council meeting of 2020. We're going to have two new council members seated and, and that means we're likely to have a couple new planning commissioners. Although Commissioner O'Nance and Hancock, please apply if you're interested. But I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to you all for your volunteer efforts to be on the commission. You know, being a planning commissioner is not a typical volunteer job. It's a multi-year commitment and involves late-night meetings and a lot of reading. And I just want to say it's, it's very much appreciated and, and you guys are part of my transition to being the director here, being smooth and feeling welcome. And I just really appreciate it. I would offer you a round of applause, but I don't think that that kind of translates very well in this format. So just expect a more formal thank you after we get through the council meeting tomorrow and, and we have the transition. So just stay tuned. But I just really wanted to extend that. Thank you. I'm sure many of you noticed the shop and stroll occurred over the, over the weekend and we were able to get phase one of our downtown tent installation done. So thanks so much for the Public Works crew and the city council for appropriating some money to help cover the cost of that. I, it came out amazingly well. We had economic development staff from planning, from Petaluma in town, looking at our installations and, and taking notes because we did a very good job and just really would encourage folks to go down and check those outdoor dining venues out and it just, it really helps kind of bring the inside-outside. And thank you for Rancho Adobe staff for helping us get those tents permitted and keeping them safe with the fire extinguishers and, and signage, et cetera. But really that's phase one. Expect a few more tents to go up, both on public and private property. But you'll remember the city council voted and spent a fair amount of money to purchase those tents. And so we are installing those for folks to try to keep the downtown lively for the community. And those will be going up a few more, but though they're, the city owns them and they're, they're being provided at no cost to those businesses. And they're up and downtown's, you know, open for business as much as we can be. As JP identified in the beginning of his presentation, this is kind of the second step in kind of a long walk we're going to be on, implementing a lot of new housing policy in response to some direction from the state. And also starting to set the foundation for our housing element update I mentioned earlier. So as we head into the early part of 2021, we're going to continue to talk housing. We're going to continue to bring kind of some new housing policies, some, some new kind of infrastructure with regards to housing regulation to meet some of the mandates that the state has put on us. And we have that work going on. So we're going to be bringing objective design guidelines that will allow the city to put its stamp on some of the buy-right housing projects that are now allowed throughout the state. And then we're also starting to identify our housing opportunity sites. And so part of the new housing element update is we may not be able to reuse all the sites that we've already identified as housing opportunity sites in the housing element. And so we're going to have to go through a process, kind of a community process to look at where we want to grow, how we want to grow and, and re-delegate some of those parcels around town as housing opportunity sites, which does make it easier for them to be developed with housing projects. So it's just important to be thoughtful and thinking that way because we will have to make some of those changes and that will be brought before the planning commission, the city council. Uh because we will have to make some of those changes and that will be brought before the planning commission, the city council uh to designate those. Um. We continue to see a lot of development interest. Um a lot of people are asking questions, a lot of, we get a lot of inquiries. We haven't, hasn't resulted in. A lot of applications yet, but I do anticipate kind of spring of two thousand and twenty-one to be a busy time for the Department of the Planning Commission. Um and then lastly, along those lines, I just will point out, some of you are probably seeing some of the changes out at. Uh the former Reds Recovery Room site, the Monahan Pacific site that the city approved. An assisted living facility on. Um they ran into some pretty significant financing uh headwinds, as you can imagine. Not a lot of banks are rushing to finance assisted living projects. Uh in the age of COVID. And so they quickly pivoted and approached the city. Asking about uh just making repairs to their existing buildings, bringing those up to code. And uh getting some tenants uh occupying those bit, those businesses or those buildings. And so. As owners of existing buildings, they had a right to renovate those and that's the choice that they chose to do. So they are. Uh proceeding with some pretty substantial. Uh improvements under a renovation permit or, or a repair permit. Uh and the planning commission can expect to see. A design review application to kind of look at what the facades of the, and the site improvements are going to look at. To put a new parking lot there, to, to put new siding and facades around those buildings. And really bring them to life uh with some new tenants on the west side of town. So just wanted to answer, or to provide. Maybe an answer to some questions that people had on that. Uh and then finally, uh as part of our housing efforts. Um some Wednesday, we will be holding a, a drawing for. Um hundred dollars worth of gift cards for three folks, three individual uh folks who took our housing survey. So we've had a housing survey out for a few months, as I'm sure the commission's aware. And uh if you weren't able to take it, please do. It's available on the city's community development page under housing. And three folks who took that survey will be uh entered, or everyone will be entered into three drawings for a hundred dollar gift cards to local Katati businesses. And uh don't worry if you don't win that. There's going to be another opportunity as we're having another design survey. To help us inform the design guidelines that I talked about, or the uh, I'm sorry, objective design guidelines that I talked about. Uh and that survey is going to be going live uh this week. And everybody who takes that will be entered into a win, uh drawing to also win. A hundred dollar gift cards to local Katati businesses. So. Uh that concludes my department presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Noah. Lot of exciting stuff happening. Um I'll open it up to questions from the commissioners.
Stephen, I have none.
I don't have any either, but good to hear. Thank you, Noah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Noah. It has been an amazing year. Um. And I'm so impressed with everyone and how seamless you all at the city have made this process. It's um really incredible. So. So appreciative for, for all of your hard work to make sure we can still do these meetings. Um we'll move into reports by the commission. Do any of the commissioners have reports?
I have a, a little. Report I could give. And first of all, to say, you know, thank you to all the staff for getting this um new format working. It is quite amazing and. There's been a couple, there's been one group I've been part of that hasn't worked to get this going. So it's been really nice to see this work so well in a broad. Broad system. I'd also like to say the um, the new street surfacing has around the, the hub and the inner, the, the outer hub areas looks pretty good and thank you for the bicycle marking. I can, I can guess there was some, some input to that, but really appreciate it, that it's gone down on the streets and, and made that visible. Um and similarly, the class one bike path in Richardson Lane that's gone in, that has looked very nice and um. Appreciate that that's coming along. And then one other partly maybe um a little plug for something that the city's going to be getting up to and maybe Noah could comment how this works for the. The planning side of things or the structure inside the city, but there's a local road safety analysis that has been initiated. Um and is going to be by all the other cities in the county. So there will be an opportunity for, I guess, a. Um as citizens um input. Um and then from what I understand, completely separate from the planning commission or the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission that is part of the planning. Um looking at how the road safety works. We, we, in my time in Katati, there have been four people, four homicides. Um one was an accidental, one was something happened with a young man. And then there's been three people involved with vehicular. Um crashes of some sort or things, including just last week, somebody on Myrtle. Was hit. So I think, you know, just um keeping that visibility up on. How do we get better safety is a really good one. And um, you know, I, I think the bicycle and. Um pedestrian side of things is an important input to that and, and the report. Well, anyway, I'd like to throw that out there. Ask Noah if I could. Just how that works um next year.
Yeah, so you are absolutely correct. That is being headed by the Public Works Department. Uh as you mentioned, it's a county-wide effort and so as such, it's coming through the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. Uh and they tend to kind of funnel their efforts through the various public works. Departments of each of the cities in the county. And so it will be led by Public Works, but we will definitely. Uh ensure that it's uh at least notified to the planning commission. We'll use the planning commission as kind of a platform to notify the community. Uh of all the meetings that are happening, all the various means of providing input. And if it's appropriate, depending on kind of the format and the, the uh kind of aspects of the report or, or. Information that's coming out, we will bring it before the planning commission uh as the city's bicycle and pedestrian oversight body. But I don't have any more specifics beyond that at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And by the way, I think it's fantastic that the Public Works is doing it because they are the people who actually shake the road, literally have to. You know, put the concrete down or put the plans together um for other people to actually um do that. So I think that's, that's it. That one other item that I've actually heard about though is that the, for the, for the um smart train. Um the section of the bike path from Rona Park to Santa Rosa is being put out to bid. So that will be a connect, you know, some more connectivity from Katati up through Rona Park to Santa Rosa on a bicycle path. So I, I heard that was going out to bid and I've also heard there's still um rumblings of some more changes to the road structure at the top of Commerce. Where there's that T junction. Um and that's looking to be reworked as a circular arrangement, I believe.
Uh Chair, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Hancock, that is correct. And Public Works Department has been engaged with the Rona Park Public Works folks on that design and how it transitions into Katati.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hancock, did you have anything else to add?
That's me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, um with that, I'll move into item H, which is items received after the agenda was posted. Do we have any items? To report here?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead um and close out the meeting today. Thank you again. I hope everyone has a wonderful new year and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much, Stephen Neil. Really appreciate it.
Okay, well, good night, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Noah, I'll be calling you tomorrow. We'll have a chat.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.